Good morning, I'd like to welcome you all here for the I'd like to call order this meeting of always counting board commissioners for Monday, June 2nd. First item on the agenda is review the minutes from May 19th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No, I would move that we accept the minutes as written.
And move to second that we accept the minutes as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same, motion passed. I'm gonna do a little change and you're gonna let Jeff from ARC come up and not gonna make him step through the whole meeting, unless he wants to.
It sounds interesting. Okay, thanks for having me. Like I said earlier, I feel like the opening act at a Taylor Swift concert, but that's okay. So, but I was struck, and I feel compelled to say that the, the process or the scene that's playing out here today is uniquely American, right? That we get to be involved in our governing processes. That's, it's a very American thing to be able to have government by the people, for the people. And citizens get to be involved and have a voice, so I think it's kind of cool and it's in that kind of way. So I guess that's one way to look at it, right? So, anyway, well, I'm from the ARC, I'm Jeff Patton, and I come every year to make a annual request for funding from the county commissioners. The ARC, for those of you that don't know, the ARC is a national organization. We have over six hundred and fifty chapters across the country. We're the oldest and the largest organization that provides programs, services, support for people with disabilities. And I'm proud to say that Indiana has more chapters of the ARC than any other state in the United States. We have forty-four chapters in Indiana. And the ARC of Wabash County, seventy-one years, strong, gone strong. We're expanding, we're growing, doing some great things over here at the ARC. And we appreciate the support from the county and, and the support and encouragement and inclusion from the citizens in Wabash County as well. So just, I just want to hit a few highlights, I won't take too much of your time. This last year, we provided services and support for over a hundred and fifty adults and youth in Wabash County. And we provide eight core programs, and your monies help us to run these programs. Transportation, residential services. We have a pre-employment program in every high school in the county to help individuals, students who have disabilities. We have a community employment program where we are finding jobs in the county for people who have disabilities. We have respite services to give caretakers a little break from their difficult job they have. And we provide a lot of vocational training for people with disabilities. We operate several micro businesses over at the ARC. We do a lot of subcontract work for companies like Ford Meterbox, Dexter, Axel, others. We do bulk mailings. We opened a coffee house in North Manchester about a year ago. And we train and employ people with disabilities there, and that's going very well. That's been a big success. Many of you know that we have a secure document shredding business at the ARC, it's called Shreds of Hope. Just last month, we received our certification from ISigma MaID, which is the national organization that does monitoring and auditing and such for document destruction. And that was an eighteen-month process, and we worked really hard at that. So what that means is we'll be able to expand our customer base for our document shredding business and hire more people with disabilities to work in that business. And these folks make a competitive hourly wage. So it brings a lot of economic independence for individuals with disabilities. So I would just like to put a plug in. I think every business, every corporation, every household in Wabash County should be contracting with the ARC for their shredding services. We keep that impact right here in town because paperwork spies all of our shredded paper from us. So the, the economic cycle stays right here. So I'd encourage you to visit our website and check that out. This last twelve months, we generated over five hundred thousand dollars of revenue just from our shredding business. So, and it is growing and getting even larger. Uh, let's see, what else can I share with you? Our community employment program, right now, we have over seventy participants enrolled. They're either currently working in community jobs or they're looking for work with our help. This last year, that program had an impact, an economic impact of over five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And as far as folks being able to be more self-sufficient, putting money back into the local economy, paying taxes, and that sort of thing. We're very excited also, we do a lot of collaboration with other businesses and companies in Wabash County. One example is we're finishing up second year of a program at Parkview Hospital, it's called Project Search. We have four interns, young adult interns who have disability. And they train in the different departments at the hospital. And they do that for nine months, and the goal there is to make them more employable, to increase their skills, and then will help them find employment when they're done. So actually tomorrow is our second graduating class of four individuals that we did for last year. So Parkview has been a tremendous partner and helper for us. Additionally, we just purchased a couple of weeks ago, six fifteen Manchester Avenue, it used to be an Edward Jones office. And that will now be the kaleidoscope art studio. The ARC will be launching a creative arts program in that building to allow individuals with disabilities a creative space to do different types of arts and then also to kind of use it as a side hustle or a side gig to earn some income for themselves as well. Lastly, I did mention last year, May of twenty-four, we did purchase some land up at the Moret Business Park in Field Dreams. And that's still on our timeline for us, we hope to build a new facility in the very near future. So just be looking out for that as well. I would say in closing, the ARC of Wabash County would like to request seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars support from the county for this next program year. This request has remained the same since two thousand and twenty-two. We have not asked for an increase in four years. And these monies will help us with the valuable work that we do to support people with disabilities, to help them live meaningful lives and also help them make meaningful contributions to the Wabash community and the other communities in Wabash County that we serve. So that's just some highlights, and if you have any questions or...
If, if there's a company or an individual that wishes to look into shredding, just have them contact you at the...
Yes, they can call our office, five six three eight four one one. Or they can go to our website, the ARC of Wabash County, and there's a link there for the shredding. Yeah.
Maybe we could show them, maybe we could put that on our website.
Okay.
Great, and I did give her a card, a shredding company card in that bag up there, so she has that.
Other questions or comments from the commissioners? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, we appreciate you coming in, we'll add you to the list.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Next, we have the question for August 30th here, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the issuance of improvement locations permits for carbon sequestration project. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna open it up to the commissioners first, if they have questions or comments, and then we'll get, we'll move to the public again. So, any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? And if you do, I ask that you come up to the microphone there and speak in the end so we, everybody can hear. And I'm gonna, I mean, I am gonna limit you to two minutes, because we're kind of on a tight schedule this morning with that drainage toward ten o'clock, so ask that you be brief and to the point and show courtesy to, to people that are speaking. Bill, did you have?
Commissioners, thank you for being along with me here today. I, I know you believe in gravity and I go as quickly as I can, two minutes may be crushing it just a little bit, I'll do my best. I joined the Hagen Out and Development Group here in August of two thousand and six, just at the beginning of one of the worst recessions I had experienced in my entire life. It carried on for a few years, and it did a lot of damage to a lot of people and a lot of businesses, particularly to manufacturing and agriculture. Manufacturing because we lost businesses to relocation to Mexico. And we lost businesses to consolidation into other states or other communities. Our largest single employer at the time, GDX relocated to Mexico, lost eight hundred and forty jobs. And with that closure, we, our population shrank by one thousand and seventy people, a lot of income taxes that weren't paid. Our two most economic sectors in Wabash County are agriculture and they're manufacturing. Manufacturers are critically important because as our, as this agriculture and ag business, because they do a couple of things that most businesses don't do. They create wealth and they import capital. A farmer creates wealth when he takes a piece of land and grows corn out of it, that's new wealth that didn't exist before. A manufacturer is somebody who takes that raw material and transforms it into another product, such as ethanol, and then sells it elsewhere with those funds coming back into Wabash County. That helps, that helps improve our balance of payments because they're importing capital. Our goal, working with Poet initially, was to attract a significant capital investment, and my belief, my memory, old, but my memory is that they, they agreed to, to invest a hundred and ten million dollars to create a number of relatively high-paying jobs at the time, and the number we agreed on was, was forty-five. Or actually, I think it was thirty-five, and they're now at fifty. They, we're also going to purchase up to thirty million bushels of corn, as much of as they could locally, and do so with premium prices if they sign contracts to, for, for production and delivery. Everybody's kept their word. Everybody's done everything that they said they would do. Especially them, they have been really good stewards of the, of, of Wabash County. They're good corporate citizens, they support local charities, and, and have gifted about forty-three thousand dollars last year in addition to all the taxes they pay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you about one more minute.
All right, let, well, then let's try to close this up as quickly as I can. What are the critical components that was included in this package? It was approved by the county commissioners, by the county council, by the planning, county planning commission, by everybody had to approve it, is that the TIF proceeds and the TIF, the tax increment financing, were to be used to support onsite and offsite capital investments such as electrical distribution, roads and highways, rail. And it required them, in addition to the jobs they're creating, and, and in addition to the coal, the corn they were gonna buy, if the trust and adventure agreement required them to be able to produce jet fuel for sale in airports. In order for them to do that going forward, we have to have some, a green aspect to everything. And it's an unfortunate thing, but that's what it is. The carbon sequestration gets them there, will help them stay as a sustainable, profitable business that benefits agriculture, benefits manufacturing, benefits Wabash County. They're a good taxpayer, and especially as a result of Senate Bill One that passed, we should all appreciate that. That's as close to two minutes as I can do, and I cut out some important stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate any question, thank you.
Mr. Turflinger?
He didn't state his name when he sat down.
He did.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Bill Cunningham.
Okay, yeah.
And where's he from?
I live about eight tenths of a mile from here in the both.
Yes, no question.
Comment. Yeah, come on up to the microphone. I will ask that you state your name and your ad, address when you come up to speak, I apologize for missing that on the table.
Uh, Matt Ward with Poet, eight sixty-eight East eight hundred North in North Manchester. And on behalf of Poet, I'm here today to respectfully ask the Wabash County Commission to vote no. On the proposed separated moratorium of CCS projects, we're passionate about advancing American agriculture, striving to mature biofuels, continuing to support Hoosier families and rural communities. With forty percent of the state's corn crop going to bioprocessing facilities, a healthy future for Indiana agriculture hinges on the healthy growth of biofuels. CCS is an important part of that vision. Our farmers are facing unprecedented challenges. Rising inflation, high input and energy costs, trade uncertainty, and more have contributed to a declining farm economy. With ninety-seven percent of Hoosier farms family-owned, our farmers need new markets for their crops to ensure Indiana agriculture remains solvent into the future. CCS is one of the ways that we can do that. These projects allow farmers and biofuel producers to stay competitive. As markets grow and expand, corn demand and farmland values rise, strengthening our economy. The county as a whole will see a boost with more jobs, local investment, and sustained economic growth. A temporary moratorium threatens that and would cycle any potential for growth. As states across the county greenlight similar projects, this will be a flag in the sand indicating the county is closed to new business. Poet has done much due diligence regarding the long-term viability of this project. We strive not only to meet but exceed every permitting and safety standard. This project involves a thorough regulatory process, one that includes oversight from state and federal agencies like the Indiana Department of Natural Resources and the EPA. As the county considers sending further ordinances, we ask that you remain aligned with existing state and federal framework. Uh, we will continue to listen to community concerns and to work with county leadership to develop an ordinance that aligns with the existing state and federal regulations. We ask that this ordinance be completed i- in a, in a timeline that is in accordance with the IDNR rules. Uh, and as a member of the North Manchester community since two thousand and eight, our top priority is to be responsible neighbors and good stewards of Wabash County. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Back in the background.
My name is Josh Leffler, I live at fourteen twelve East nine hundred North, North Manchester, is one mile northeast of Poet. The houses you see in this community contain real people with real families that have spent precious years building their own memories. List of heartwarming memories made by the people that lived in this community that Poet's plans could very well affect are endless. But the one memory that none of us look forward to being able to talk about later on is the day that our neighborhood was turned into a giant CO2 wasteland by a couple of companies who are hell-bent on getting their hands on some forty-five Q, forty-five Z, or any other tax credits available for this project. During the public meeting in March, Poet and Vault stated that they currently emit CO2 into the atmosphere. It's this CO2 that they tell us they need to remove to store safely in the ground in order to lower their carbon store, as well as help out farmers and whatnot. Why didn't Poet feel the need to fully explain what happens to that CO2 after it's emitted into our atmosphere? Why wasn't the entire process explained to us in that meeting? In an email sent to me from Vault, they explained this entire process, calling it a closed carbon cycle. They state that the corn comes in with CO2 already in it from the natural growing cycle of it. When the corn is processed, that CO2 is then emitted into the atmosphere where it is then reabsorbed by the next year's corn crop. The corn obviously will be harvested, brought in for processing, then the cycle will repeat itself. This method, they tell me, introduces no new CO2 into our environment per their own email. They say this is in stark contrast to fossil-derived CO2, which is introduced into our environment, adding to the greenhouse gases that affect our climate. So it seems to me that Poet already has a very safe and effective and efficient method put into place for dealing with their CO2 right now that to my knowledge has had no ill effects on either our atmosphere or the people in our community. They should never be allowed to inject this pressurized CO2 into the ground to see what sort of side effects might come from their little science experiment in the years to come. How was this ridiculous project ever allowed to even get this far? The project needs stops, so I say let's start today by slapping them with this moratorium that they have very much earned. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concerns.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Deborah Ellerman. I live at thirty-two sixty-eight East five hundred North. Josh Leffler is my son. I can't believe that we have come to this point. This should have been stopped before we ever got here. CO2s are deadly. They brought up the point that CO2s are in our bodies, yes, they are. But if we paid attention in biology class, those same CO2s will kill us if our oxygen levels drop. I know, because I had two sons that had eutins. One of them, their oxygen level dropped to eighty percent. He turned blue, he's fawning at the mouth, he's fighting for every breath he can take because the CO2s are killing him because there's not enough oxygen in his body to survive. You're gonna put a well in and put pressurized CO2s into the ground. They'll kill us because when, it's only when if they don't watch what they're doing and that explodes into the atmosphere. People like Josh and their neighbors won't have the time or any way to get out of the path. CO2s kill at high levels. The CO2s that are being put into the ground are concentrated. They're a lot stronger, but they react the same. Now I don't understand why you want to take a chance on our livelihood. Chances of our grounds being polluted, let's call it what it is. And in my opinion, Poet needs to be stopped. We have got to start caring about the people of Wabash County and the consequences of our actions. We have got to care about what we're gonna lead to our generations behind. The way they're doing it now, we're okay. You pump stuff in the ground, CO2s can be our friend, but they can also be our enemy. I don't want my water contaminated, I heard the solution, whether it's true or not, was you're gonna put a filtration system in our homes. Why? I don't want them to do that to my water well. I don't want this pollution to go on anymore. There are better solutions, this is year twenty twenty-five. In my opinion, I'm worried. Poet had meetings behind the people of Wabash County's backs. If it's so good for all of us, why did they do that? Now, in my opinion, they need to be stopped, we need to do more research on this, and we need to come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Mr. Turflinger?
Dave Turflinger. My grandkids and my family live close to this Poet site. And I've been studying this, I went to the DNR hearing last week. Poet can still make ethanol. It's not like the farmer's market is going away. The forty-five Q just allows them to make jet fuel on ethanol. Yeah, it's a new market opportunity, no doubt, but at what cost? What's the reward for Wabash County? What's the risk? Okay, Archer Daniels Midland, right across the line in Decatur, Illinois. This stuff, but if it gets under eighty-eight, number one, it's not pumped in the ground, it's injected. You're taking a gas and compressing it into a liquid and it's over eighty-eight degrees, thousand seventy-one PSI, and it becomes in a supercritical state. And when that happens, it mixes with the salt brine down there. It turns the soil down there and rock into something that has a two-point-nine pH. And in the case of Decatur, Illinois, it ate through the vent pipes and started leaking. So the state shut them down, and then the state, the senate and the house passed the law, no more carbon capture in the state of Illinois. Like the lady from Illinois called in at the hearing last week, this really struck with me is, it's, they're only five miles from the injection point, she said, do you think this stuff is gonna stop if Indiana's injecting it because it crosses the line on a map? It's not, it's dangerous. You know, uh, all the, all the safety devices they talk about are man-made devices, and we all know that those fail. The Titanic, the Space Shuttle Challenger, Space Shuttle Columbia, you know, the Deepwater Horizon, the Well Rig, you know, their safety devices failed, and we had a sixteen-inch pipeline of crude oil into the Gulf for over a month before they didn't get it shut up. Again, I asked the commissioners the question, what's the reward for Wabash County and what's the risk? I know what it is for Poet. They can get their carbon score to zero, and then they qualify for the forty-five Q Greenpeace initiatives and millions of dollars in subsidies. We don't need it. They can still make up the law. The farmers can still have a great market right here without having to have higher costs hauling their corn to Decatur or New Haven or down to Tipton. And I don't disagree with Mr. County, they've been a good neighbor. We follow the Benjamins, this, this here, this is a bad idea. And I talked to Vault at one of the first meetings, sort of back in November, about the safety devices. I spent forty-two years in the pipeline industry, I know how devices work. And quite frankly, they weren't telling the truth. And when I asked him specifically to rent the honeywell and have public meetings, the guy looked, looked me right in the eyes and said, oh, we don't want to do that, we saw what happened with solar here, we'd rather take small groups on tours. Well, my, in my history book, that's divide and conquer. Like the other gentleman from ARC says, we all have a right, we all have a right here. And, you know, this, this country fought a war in partite. And when you add in the eminent domain piece and the corruption from Indianapolis, you know, we're gonna have six or eight people around Poet that signed up for this, steamrolling four hundred and fifty square miles of Wabash County. You know, we're paying some of the highest taxes in the state on farm ground, and you just want to take away their rights? And then when you get into the contract that you sign, you can't drill anything on your property other than a water well three hundred and fifty feet deep. I want to know why. You know, if you look at the drawing for carbon fracking, and look at the drawing for carbon capture, the only thing missing is the vent pipe. Well, we all know business models change. We all know business models change. They said in the contract, they said in public meetings that they have no plans to bring those empty rail cars back full of carbon from outside the county, yet there's a provision in the contract that pays the farmers extra money if they do that. Well, any good businessman knows, if you can bring the empty cars back full, you just increased your profit. So I'm begging you, approve this moratorium, do our planning commission, and our planning director, time to write an ordinance, and... And one of the things that did happen, a good thing, is enough people showed up at the NRC, I, the DNR hearing last week. That they're gonna have to have more meetings and that's when people that don't want this and don't want their right stepped on. Need to show up for that, that next meeting and maybe we can get this stopped in the whole state of Indiana. Thank you.
Ryan Ballper, sixty-one forty-three North, one fifty East Urbana. Wasn't on plan on talking today. This is definitely on my tougher zone, but I got some things need to be said. I recommend you guys pass this moratorium. I mean no disrespect for this, but Vault has been nothing but lying to us from day one. This all started December twenty-three. We got calling the first meeting. A lot of questions Vault can't answer, they won't answer. We'll get back to you. We're still waiting on answers from December twenty-three. They have changed their story several times. They're, they're bad news. Vault, Vault hasn't been good to us. January sixth, twenty twenty, worst days of my life. Vault was there, most of the guys in this room. So they have a lot of good. Vault has been good. But I cannot get behind this project. It's not good and majority of the community cannot get behind this project, so. And I know several people who work at Poet and I said, what happens if this doesn't go through? They said, we're still gonna be in ethanol business. So don't let them tell you that they're gonna run our business because they're not. So, thank you.
Yes.
Name's Dave Cummings. I live on nine hundred North, just about a mile and a half away from Poet. Wabash has something to brag about. We, Wabash County, city, first electrical-laden city in the world. Do we want to take a chance with this going on and put that little black mark next to Wabash in Wabash County? That's all I've got to say.
Yes.
Good morning, members of the commission. I need some help here with the Indiana Ethanol Producers Association, one-three-one-seven-nine North, one-hundred East Alexandria. Uh, we are the state's leading trade and advocacy organizations for biofuels like ethanol. And have member facilities in Rensselaer, Portland, North Manchester, Alexandria, Bloomingdale, and Shelbyville. Biofuels like ethanol are an important success story for the Indiana economy and the industry is vital to Hoosier farmers and our rural communities. Today, nearly half of the state's annual corn crop is initially processed at a facility like ours. Where it is converted into products like ethanol, high-protein animal feed, corn oil, and more. These facilities are an economic and development engine, support more than thirty-five thousand jobs in nineteen thousand farms. Just by coming into a community, an ethanol plant creates demand that boosts local grain prices for farmers. Carbon capture and storage represents the next leap forward for the American bioprocessing success story. Today, there is significant domestic and global demand for lower carbon fuels. And thanks to Indiana's unique geology in the US corn belt, we are uniquely qualified to take advantage of this opportunity. There are numerous facilities across the state who have taken steps to pursue CCS. Which could produce additional value for every bushel of corn delivered by their farmer customers. This is a proven safe technology that has been utilized for decades. It is strictly regulated for safety and for all stakeholders between federal, state, and local regulations. There will be multiple opportunities for the community to provide feedback. Speaking for the IEPA, we have worked closely alongside stakeholder groups like Indiana Corn, Farm Bureau. Along with state regulators to craft state regulations that work with Indiana. This moratorium runs counter to this well-established regulatory process. And puts Wabash County producers at a disadvantage to access this opportunity and will impact farmers' bottom lines. It sends a strong signal that Wabash County is closed for business. The Indiana Ethanol Producers Association urges you to oppose this moratorium. Thank you for your time. We'll have to answer any question.
Yes.
Morning commissioners. Uh, my name's Chris Cherry. I'm the president of the Indiana Corn Growers Association. I live, or my farm is in fifty-five sixty-eight East, one hundred South Greenfield, Indiana. So I've raised corn, soybeans, wheat in Hancock County. Indiana is one of America's top producers of ethanol corn. As it said, more than forty percent of corn goes in ethanol production. The ethanol industry also supports nearly forty thousand jobs and contributes an estimated three billion. To Indiana household incomes and drives two-hundred-and-seventeen-point-eight million in state exports. The ethanol industry is a vital market for the Indiana, for corn grown on the Indiana Hoosier farms. The Indiana Corn Growers Association, ICGA, is a non-for-profit, non-for-profit, sorry, untitled. Composed of over six hundred former farmer members. The ICGA supports research and investment management practices for carbon sequestration. The organization also advocates for appropriate regulatory oversight of carbon sequestration and the protection of landowner property rights. Additionally, ICGA supports the implementation of carbon capture and sequestration projects that adhere to the best management practices. And safeguard property rights. Indiana corn farmers need Poet and all of Indiana's thirteen ethanol plants. Looking forward to build infrastructure for the fuel markets of the future. The Indiana Corn Growers Association believes that carbon capture and storage is an important tool in securing the future of Indiana's ethanol industry. Thank you. Any questions?
If something happened, what emergency plan? Who had it placed?
Excuse me, if you got conversation, I'm gonna ask him, Dave.
No, I think she's asking a question. I'm asking a question, Mr. Dawes.
Okay. I am, I'm sorry, I recognize Mr. Rumpel here and I'll give you a chance to come back and. You know, Mr. Rumpel, can you?
Thank you. I like, Ryan was not actually gonna speak, but. I'm Steve Rumpel, by the way. Eleven fifty-two East, nine hundred North. Stone's throw away from Poet. And I don't think there's a farmer in this room or in this county that wants Poet or ethanol to go away. That's not what we're about. As I understand it from the, one of the other meetings that we had. The ethanol that they're producing now will not change one bit. If this CO2 sequestration is allowed. I think there was also a meeting where Vault was asked the question, if these tax credits were not available, would you be doing this? And the question without, or the answer without hesitation was no. So, I don't really think that it's necessary. What's gonna happen with Poet is, yes, their carbon score will be lowered. Maybe that's the reason they can produce a project fuel, but the ethanol itself won't change. So I'm asking you, as a farmer who sells grains to Poet. Does not want them to go away, but I'm asking you to vote yes on this moratorium. Thank you.
Any other questions before I go back to, yes?
Then Senator.
Yeah. I'm gonna ask for you to wait. I, I will give you a chance to come back. I want to get to somebody that has this. Yes.
Good morning. Uh, thank you to the county commissioners for this opportunity to provide comment on the proposal to impose a temporary moratorium. Uh, my name is Susan Barreside. My address is eleven twenty-five Seventeenth Street, Denver, Colorado. I recognize I'm not from here. It doesn't mean I don't care about the safety and values of the people in the community of Wabash. That is very important to me. It also means I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to sit at this table. Um, and participate in these discussions today and honestly for the past several months. As previously discussed, CCS regulations were made part of the state statute in twenty-twenty-two with passing of House Bill twelve oh nine. Additional legislation was passed this year that clarifies that statute. Rulemaking was approved by the Natural Resources Commission and public comments, which many folks in this room participated, was occurred with the closing date of May twenty-nine. These are relevant details. Um, it addresses the extent of public participation in the rulemaking process at the state level. The development process for carbon sequestration projects is extensive at both the federal and state levels. Both include demanding and rigorous technical reviews by the EPA and assurances around health, safety, and long-term viability of these projects. Considering the extensive public engagement at the state level to craft a regulatory framework coupled with extensive technical review for the permitting process at the federal level. We firmly believe that any moratorium must align and reflect the extensive work that has already been performed to date. This includes extensive work that ensures the highest standards of project design, engineering, implementation, execution, and safety. As well as public consultation and participation. Vault is very grateful to have been at the table with Wabash County over the course of the past seven months. As we have together discussed the moratorium and held multiple meetings with county staff, elected officials, and members of this community. As Mr. Patton said earlier, we appreciate the ability to be a part of this very American process. And are here to listen to your concerns and share all details about our project. We encourage to see the conversation shift from discussions of moratorium to discussions on how to work together on responsible local ordinances. Regardless of today's vote, Vault respectfully requests this commission to consider additionally recommending a work group. Dedicated to drafting ordinances and create realistic targeted timelines. For example, we could request the consideration of a work group that be established to design ordinances that align with administrative rules of the state and regulatory requirements that are being written by the state of Indiana. We would ask this group be identified by June thirtieth with an initial meeting of July twenty-eighth. And further, we request that this work group's efforts be completed with the ordinance approved and implemented with a target date of October twenty twenty-five. In alignment with the state rulemaking timelines. We truly look forward to working with you as the rules of the state become final and we continue to engage the community on this important project. Vault alongside our partner Poet has been an active participant with Wabash County. Responding in extensive detail to every request on technical aspects of this project. And we will continue to work in transparent partnership with the community and leaders of Wabash County. To ensure that local ordinances are protective and support the future plans of Poet, farmers, and this community at large. Thank you again for this consideration and opportunity to provide feedback into this very important process.
I have questions, if you don't mind. These are concerns that constituents have brought to me. And one of them was that they would put an Osmose reverse system on their household wells if something would, would happen. What would happen or what would we do to water our livestock?
I don't think that I need the person to answer that question, Commissioner Ross. Um, I do know that when the question was asked with regards to household water. Our VP of Projects explained in the Public Information Center that part of our EPA permit requires. That a reverse Osmosis filter be provided to folks. I'm happy to follow up with you with details about larger water use concerns.
Okay, and then, um, when you were here in November, and I'm not sure if it was you or who said it, but it was stated that. That you wanted two thousand acres for the project. You would like to have as much as ten thousand, or Poet, Vault, whoever stated it. I, I'm, and now we're looking at point six miles, which is less than two thousand acres, correct? There are several, there's six, I believe, people who have signed leases. There are lots of other people in that. Eminent domain was discussed. You had told me that, um, you wanted a hundred percent participation. Is that still the case?
Let me take this piece by piece, Commissioner. I think there, and this actually goes to my recommendation for a work group. Cause I think there's remains a lot of confusion in spite of our best efforts and opportunities to talk about this because there's a vast difference between. Surface land acquired for this project and horse-based agreements. And the folks that we talked to about this project when we were initially scoping it. And where we ended up wanting to ideally place the well. And then work with folks to secure agreements for horse-based lease access. I'm not at liberty to talk about those poor space lease details. I think everybody in this room would agree that if we had a contract with anybody. They'd want us to respect their privacy and not talk about that in a tough environment. But I do think that a work group could be put together to talk about protections and answer concerns. And the differentiation between things like eminent domain, which is use of surface area. And horse-based agreements, which is leasing the space almost a mile below our feet. Where the product will be permanently and safely sequestered. So I think these are questions that we could much better answer and reduce this confusion. By taking a little bit of the project specifics out and just differentiating between those, those concepts and what's required here.
I, I'm gonna stop here because I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak that wishes to speak, so. I'm gonna ask that we stop with those questions and I'm gonna start right now.
I appreciate your time, your, your consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Bree and, or my brother nephew and I, like Ryan said, I'm, I'm a couple, so here, but we have a farm right about a quarter mile from Poet. And I definitely oppose this ordeal. I got five, six grandsons coming up. They might want to build on their grounds someday. I don't want them to have to worry about having contamination, but the old saying is, is that money is the root of all evil. I think if you take the money out of this whole project, this would be dead in the water. Thank you.
Anybody else that hasn't already spoke? Back on the, on the back row, I'm gonna let you. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, come forward.
Hey Rebecca, I have a farm down in Ridge here from Poet. We really appreciate Poet being there. It's helped our markets. But I've got a farm that's within three-quarters of a mile from Poet. Where they want to put this well. My son and his family lives there. It's concerning that we're wanting to put stuff in the ground and they say they're gonna give us a. ROC or whatever that thing is to make the water fit to drink. There's ten thousand hogs back here about half mile from my house. It's our livelihood. Poet's making money as it is right now and I'm glad they are. We all need to make a living. But it's just like, it was said, if this money wasn't available, it'd be dead in the water. What? How much money does it take for people to live? How much money do they need? It's, it's silly to me. And about three or four of these people that have talked today don't even live in the community. And about three or four of these people that have talked today don't even live in the community. I'm sorry, folks. This is where I live, my family. I'm concerned and thank you.
Anybody else before that hadn't already spoke? Hey, on the back row, I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes.
Deborah Allen. My question is, do we have any emergency plans in place in case something goes seriously wrong? Vault, how long have you been in business?
I'm gonna ask you to direct your questions to.
How long have they been in business? Do they have scientific data to prove that this is safe? Poet is the best thing for our farmers. I am not complaining about that. I thought we could trust them. I thought they were good neighbors. But pumping or injecting CO2s in the ground, a chance of ruining our water that we drink and bathe in and our animals rely on is not a good process. I'm with the rest of them. If money wasn't involved, we wouldn't be here. It's time that we put the people of Wabash County first and their concerns and what they believe in. What future are we gonna leave for our children? I hope it's a future where we're safe to grow things, our water is safe, and we don't have to go to bed every night worrying is something over there gonna go seriously wrong? Or the water I drink today is something in it that's gonna make me sick or worse, we form a new form of cancer. Please. Don't let them do this. We need time to do more research. Nobody answered me when I asked about the emergency plans in place, how our water's gonna be tested. Think poet will go on. And the thing that baffles me the most is what they're using now with the CO2 is working. Like my granddad or Virgil said, if it works, don't fix it. Thank you for listening to me.
Anybody else?
I got one more thing. It's very short. I promise. I think everybody that went to the March twenty meeting remembers people asking Vault about the forty-five Q and if this is why they're doing this or not. We really didn't get a straight answer. Why would they? So the question I had for Vault in an email that I sent them, I'll read it right here. I said Vault forty-four oh one stated that they applied for a permit, one that they had requested an injection time period of twelve years. I asked, why exactly did you pick twelve years as your injection timeline? This project seems very much based very much based on science. So is there a scientific reason why you chose twelve years? Why not eleven years? Why not thirteen? Do certain risks climb up too high? Do certain risks climb at too high of a rate after twelve years? Will the injection site simply become twofold according to your math after the twelve-year period? What reason precisely do you have for picking that operation timeline? The response Vault's app Vault's permit application for North Manchester contemplates, not is, contemplates an injection period for twelve years, which is aligned with the forty-five Q tax incentive period. I don't remember them saying that in the public meeting at all. Matter of fact, I think they beat around the bush pretty severely. They then said, because the permanent storage reservoir has an extensive storage capacity, it will not become too cold after the twelve-year period. For some projects, it is possible the injection period will be longer than twelve years. The project is being developed, our project is being developed with optionality to extend operations beyond the initial twelve-year term, enabling continued CO2 injection to support transportation fuel demand as more US states and countries adopt low-carbon fuel standards requiring reductions in carbon intensity. I just wanted to share that what they said in the March twenty meeting does not at all reflect what they told me in the email when I utilized the email address they got. They they were kind enough to let us use their North Manchester email address. I'll show everyone to share. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah.
It don't take a rocket scientist to figure out. Everybody that's spoken up is being paid for by poet or someone along that line that wants this voted down. But all the rest of us, we live here. We're volunteering. We do not want this. So vote yes.
Anybody else?
I'd like to comment on Mr. Kanye's comment at the beginning about the economic development. Sure, CDX left. How many contaminated acres did they leave? Under the permitting process that that's being proposed right now and hopefully it doesn't go through, it was left out of the Senate bill, if they put down ten million dollars, they can expedite the permit. Well, having come from the pipeline industry, I can guarantee if there's a release, you're gonna spend more than a million dollars a day. And at the end of twelve years and these wells are capped, as long as they're capped according to the DNR, guess who's responsible? But it leaves after that, state of Indiana, all of us, the taxpayers. This is a bad idea. And the geologist that was at the hearing last week said that this two-point-nine soil, you know, it gets into the water. Well, it's kind of like reaction. There's an equal and opposite reaction and the path of least resistance. This gets off the money, the capstone, it gets in the water table. There's two lakes, actually three lakes, two miles west of poet's. And I didn't know you don't have time to go look it up, but that happened in Africa. In the springs that feed the lake, the carbon come up through. It killed seven thousand people. It killed every animal, every bug and the people. This is just a bad idea. So I, like I said, I've already said my piece, but I got to thinking about that and, you know, economic development's a great thing. Poet's been a great neighbor. Like everybody else said on this kind of summarizing here, they've been a great neighbor. They're marked, you know, they don't, if we put this in place and we get it turned down in the state, yeah, they don't get to qualify for the forty-five Q. And but they get to keep making ethanol and they get to be in a partner in the community and they get to keep making money. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments from commissioners? I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
Make a motion to approve the moratorium as suggested by the plant commission.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the request for a moratorium on the carbon capture. One last chance, anybody that wishes to say anything. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying motion pass. Thank you for your participation. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or you can leave at this time. Next item, Department of Reports, Danny Highway. Dan Share. EMA Director. Danny Durning. And Board Mayor, HR Directors. Danny Auditor.
Sorry. Here's your ordinance to sign. I have your non-payable claims and allowances for dockings ending May twenty-seventh and June second for your review and approval.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the non-payable claims and allowances for docking ending five twenty-seven and six Q. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed saying motion pass.
I have your payroll claims and allowances and holding, including withholding, but pay period ending five twenty-four for your review approval.
Non-payable claims and allowances.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve payroll claims and allowances, which includes the holding for pay period ending five twenty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed saying motion pass.
I have a quote for interest that I just bring up to let you know that we've started our, we do a five-year replacement policy in the county for our computers. And I have the first quote of seven thousand three hundred and eighty for some computers that will not upgrade from Windows eleven. That's just to let you know. And then I have a financial institution tax. This will go out to the taxing units as directed by the state of Indiana for seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents for your approval.
Do you have a vote on that?
Yeah.
Make a motion through the seventy thousand seven hundred and forty-three magnitude.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the request for fifty over seventy thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed saying motion pass.
Uh, no, it's it's normal. I just wanted to bring it up during.
Are they, we used to be on a kind of a stagger so that we weren't here all at once with
Yes.
replacing a bunch of you. We're still doing that?
Yes, and that's what part of this is for, yeah.
All right. Any ADA or Title VI concerns that need to be addressed this morning? Let the record reflect that there were none. Drainage board. We should should have entered. Solid waste meeting then will be on June ninth at one thirty. Any other statements or comments that need to come before the board this morning?
Morning. I'll try to make it very brief. I'm Cynthia Donovan with Rowan Covered Bridge Association. And I've been asked to come to the commissioners to make you aware we're facing some challenges. You know, we work with you to try to maintain the covered bridge. They, some of the members of our association would like to request a swing gate for the bridge on one end. We have encountered a much higher anticipated cost to apply the fire retardant that was approved that we could apply to the bridge and it's being donated by the National Association for the Preservation of Covered Bridges. And the reason it's the cost is so high is the person that was going to do it has has a lift truck. But with the post that we can't get the lift truck on the bridge to do the power washing and apply the fire retardant. So the cost of a special lift that'll fit through the post is high. So with that said, just wanting to make you aware and we're encountering some other things in preparation. Our first breakfast will be July the fifth. And we'll continue working with you to raise money. I know money is hype and we're just wondering if there could be any assistance in facilitating our preparations for the breakfast and getting the necessary equipment on the bridge. I have just recently become aware there's a possibility maybe of something. Or to complain, maybe some dollies or things like that, but I just wanted to update you and request consideration for a swing gate on one end of the bridge if possible. Thank you.
We'll take that into advisement with the minded July fifth. It's coming. Yeah, we'll see if we can come up with something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other business need to be adapted? No, I would entertain a motion for agreement.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your participation this morning.